Going to call the Finance and Operations Committee meeting to order at 6:05 PM, Monday, June 25th, at the Nashville High School North Boardroom. I'm going to take attendance, Ms. Porter.
Here.
Mr. Mosher.
Yes, I'm here.
And Mr. Guarino is here. Mr. Mosher is joining us by telephone as he recuperates. Are you by yourself, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I sure am.
Thank you, sir. So, we also have President Dottie Oden with us of the board. We have Mr. Donovan, Ms. Ogara, Ms. Timmons on the board. We have Elizabeth Van Twyver, Doris Hohensee, and Howard Kaufman, also of the board, in attendance tonight. Okay. So, I'm going to go to, if there aren't anything else, I'm going to go to the first thing on our agenda, which is the Brentwood lease. I'm going to go to Mr. Donovan. Take the floor, please.
Okay. This has been a long time coming. Been working on this for quite a while. You have in your package the lease that we're asking to be approved. I have reviewed this lease numerous times and spoken with the landlord's representative. This lease has also been reviewed by City Legal Attorney Bolton. It's also been reviewed, the insurance piece of it has been reviewed by the City Risk Department, and Tim Cummings, who's the economic development person at the city, has commented that the pricing on this is what he would consider sort of fair for the market. So, I've sort of got all the so-called experts together, taken all their comments. I then went back and negotiated with the landlord's representative. And basically, this is what's come of the lease. It's a three-year lease for the space at 410 Amherst Street. The space has also been looked at by Sean Smith and Gary Connors to make sure that any changes, we are allowed to use our own staff to make the changes we're going to need to make to the building. They're not significant. They're relatively small. And the staff at Brentwood has also been to the place, and they're quite happy with the place. So, after negotiations, this is the final lease. The pricing ended up being the latest pricing that we did receive. So, I believe it's $10,000 a month plus electrical, which is, I think, 275 a square foot, which is about $1,800. Yeah. Year one is $10,760 a month, so that gives you an annual rent of $129,120. And then on top of that, there is also, I think it's $1,800 a month for the electrical. So, that's the lease. I don't know if anyone's read it or has any questions on it.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. I'm going to ask Mr. Mosher if he has any comments or questions at this time.
Oh, I've looked over the lease, and it seems very straightforward and kind of boilerplate. And I agree it is fair. And should give us at least three years to get the, shall we say, the ship in the water. I think it's very good. I think it's a long time coming and is out of my mind.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Van Twyver, you had your hand up?
Yes, I did. May I have the floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan, after you met with the city officials, you said that you could, had some points to negotiate. What did you have to negotiate with the company?
Well, there were a number of comments. There was from the city attorney. There was probably about 15 different comments. And from the risk department, there were three or four. The risk department, they changed everything that we asked them to change. The city attorney had comments. You know, some of those things they agreed to change, some of them didn't. But they weren't anything, for example, one of the things the city attorney said was, if we can, if we leave the space, we can lease the space out. The contract says we can't, if we collect, let's say, $18 a square foot, we have to give that to the landlord. And our attorney said, well, we should get to keep the $2 difference if we're paying 16. But that's typically not something you do in a lease. They own the building. They make money on the building. You can't sort of usurp them.
Make money on their money.
Exactly. So, there are things like that. There was nothing that the, for the most part, they agreed to most of the language changes. There were a few things like that that they didn't. So, but, you know, I mean, there are some things where the landlord says, that's in the lease, that's staying. But I don't think there's anything that in a three-year lease of an 8,000-square-foot space, we're going to run into any problems with.
Was there any questions about the modifications that we were going to do to the building, like, you know, kitchen or whatever?
Well, we, there is, Sean has had some discussions with them. We're working with the space planner, that they, their own space planner now. So, we don't have all that done yet. But they did agree to let our, as long as we go ahead and get all the permits done, which typically you have to do when you're refurbishing a building of this sort, we'll go ahead, get all those things, work with the city, and then our skilled staff can do the work.
And do we have a new director or leader for Brentwood yet?
Yes, we do.
Was that person included in the discussion on this?
I'm not sure. She's relatively new. I did not speak with her. I've been working with Ellen, who worked, you know, Ellen up until, well, until the end of this week or the end of last week, whatever. So, I worked with Mrs. Greenberg.
Okay. So, someone from the Brentwood community?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. You answered, one of the questions I had was the utilities, and that's an additional cost.
Yes.
And you told us about that. I have three other things. The insurance, you said the city is okay with it. Are we now taking out a sort of a commercial insurance policy to, for the purposes of this rental, I should say lease, not rent?
Yeah, I don't think it--
Is that how we do it?
It's, it would be under our coverage. We would add it to our existing policy, so it would just--
That's like a rider on the city's existing policy for this particular lease agreement?
Exactly.
Okay, good. And the next question had to do with cleaning. The lease agreement presented to us has $1.25 per square foot as a cleaning fee. Is, are, are we going to pay them to clean the building, or are we able to use our people?
We're able to use our people. And there is a, that was a discussion that I had with them. That was one of my questions. But there is a point, I don't know exactly where it is in the lease, I could find it, but it does say that we're able to use our own--
Okay, I didn't see that part of it. I did see the additional charge, and I just wanted clarification. And my last question, when Ms. Hohensee and I visited Brentwood earlier in the year, they were barbecuing or wanted to hit a grill outside. And you might recall, I asked that question when we last met. Are we okay to put a grill outside? I didn't see anything in the lease preventing it, at least my cursory reading of it.
Yeah, I, I think if you want to have a barbecue every once in a while, you could have a grill out there and do it. I'm sure you couldn't do it on a daily basis.
Right.
Nor would I expect they'd be able to.
Yeah, I don't think they would do that either.
You know, they're not going to allow us to sort of, you know, have fun and games out there every day. We couldn't, because it is a professional office building.
And it's a school.
Sure. And, but they're, all the, all the other buildings are professional office buildings. So, you can, you can do some things occasionally. You just check with the landlord and say, we're going to have a luncheon outside, and they'd be fine with that.
That's all I had. Thank you very much. Thanks for your persistence in making this happen. I know it's been a couple of years in the making.
It has.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Thank you.
And then Ms. Hohensee.
Mr. Donovan and Mr. Smith, thank you. How many years does it take? When will the remodel, the modifications begin, and will it be done in time for the first day of school?
So, we, as Mr. Donovan mentioned, our meeting with the space planner, he's going to come up with a plan. Actually, very minor changes to the structure itself. We're taking down one wall so they can have a little expanded physical education area. And then a couple of pass-through windows, one outside the kitchen, another one outside behind the receptionist. Some plumbing, we're getting plumbing to both the art room and the science room. But that's all fairly straightforward. So, once we get approval from Brady Sullivan, the owner, then we have to go to the city's planning department and get their approval. But I expect all that would hopefully be done by the end, middle of July, which gives us plenty of time. We should be done with our work by the middle of August.
Ms. Hohensee.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan brought up the fact that we have a new principal over there. Has the board met the new principal? I don't recall an interview or hiring one.
We, there is not a principal at Brentwood. There is a coordinator position that reports to the special ed director.
But, and she's been hired?
Yes. She's not a principal, not an assistant principal. She's a coordinator.
And she's got experience teaching?
She, yes, she does.
So--
Her name is Deborah Riley.
Deborah what?
Riley. And the reason that she's still at her present school district, that's why she really hasn't been able to come over and, you know, meet.
Okay. But will, at some point, has she been through eight, we haven't approved her through HRs, we haven't met her?
Is she, is not one of the positions that the board hires?
If she were a principal, we would.
Right. But she is not a principal. She is not assistant principal.
What is her certification?
She has special ed admin.
And that's not a teacher, the special, the special ed?
It's an admin certification. We've never brought that position before the board. And in the board policy, you have assistant principal and above.
Right, assistant principal and above. But she'll have to come through the HR because every, all teachers, I mean, she, is it--
She's not a teacher. She's an admin.
Okay. So, this one, we don't get to see at all?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. So, anyone else have any comments or questions? Mr. Mosher, I'm sorry, Ms. Oden?
I just want to thank you for finding this. I know we looked at a lot of properties, and some would work for us and some wouldn't. But it's, it's nice to bring these students back to Nashville, so thank you.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any additional comments or questions?
I think it's wonderful when a plan comes together.
Thank you. So, we have, I think we're, the board, the committee members, Ms. Porter, Mr. Mosher, and myself, are at the point where we're going to deliberate, what we're going to vote on, on the recommendation. I'm entertaining a motion to recommend the Brentwood lease.
So moved.
Okay.
I second it.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes, so the motion carries. So, we move to the, advance the Brentwood lease to the full board for recommendation. Okay? Next is deferred maintenance needs. There's a, in the packet, there is a memo from Mr. Smith. Do you want to take this, Mr. Smith?
Sure. This is actually a list I provided to you previously, I believe, but it fell through the cracks when, all our discussions about the middle school program, which obviously was a much bigger one. So, the memo references a spreadsheet, which is also attached. Comes to a total of $532,730, which includes a 10% contingency for all those projects. I made note that the Alderman's Budget Review Committee was looking to transfer money to the school department to take care of the switchgear at Main Dunstable Elementary School. So, that was, I was on vacation Friday. I haven't heard if that passed the Budget Review Committee. But if it did, it'd be coming up this, tomorrow evening for the full Alderman board to address. So, assuming the $65,000 comes from a different source, we can take that out of our request, which would change the bottom line to $461,230. So, I guess for our purposes, we need a motion that includes both those numbers. One assumes the Alderman are going to give us the money, and the other one that they don't give us the money. So, again, the lower number, which assumes they give us the money, is $461,230. And if they don't approve the money, then it's the number that's on the spreadsheet, which is $532,730. Then further, I'd be looking for one more motion, and that would be to approve authorization to proceed with the switchgear retrofit. It's a sole-source contract. It is $65,000. The reason it's sole-source is the equipment is owned and patented by a particular company. And we are, instead of replacing the entire switchgear, we're going in with a retrofit kit. Had we done a different approach of entirely replacing the entire structure, so to speak, it would have cost twice as much. And this is a method that's approved by the company that patents the switchgear itself. So, I'm just asking for that advance, because I want to try to get this done before school starts in late August. And there is some lead time to getting the retrofit kit.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Van Twyver?
Hate to be the devil's advocate here, but what happens if they don't give us the $65,000? Where's that money going to come from? If we, if they approve it, or the board approves it tonight?
Well, that's why I gave you two numbers to work with. One, if they do give it to us, one if they don't. If neither one of them happen, is that your question?
Well, no. If they don't give us the money, are you still going to do this? I mean, you're going to, you have to purchase it now, right?
Yes.
Because the lead time and all that stuff.
Yes.
So, we're spending $65,000. So, if they don't give us the money, where's that money coming from?
We still have sufficient funds to cover it in our deferred maintenance pot of money that still exists. This is a high, high priority. It has to get done before school starts. So, it would go to the top, even over the paving of the North High School.
So, it will override anything else that you might use that $65 for?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any comments or questions?
The only thing I am curious about, I hear him talk about switchgear. What kind of switchgear is he talking about?
This is the main switchgear coming into Main Dunstable Elementary School. So, as you probably know, Bill, the, you have very high voltage current coming off the street, goes through your transformer. It is still--
That's on the, on the left side, as you face it?
Transformer, Main Dunstable, yes, it's on the left side. So, that then goes into the school, and it goes through the switchgear, which download, down, shifts down the voltage to the appropriate amount of 110, or in some cases, 240.
Okay. So, how long has this been in operation? And why does it have to be replaced?
The switchgear, I believe, is original to the school, which is 1970-ish.
Okay, yeah.
And it's been, it's been failing of late. We lost power in the school during school hours twice this past year. Once, I think, back in November, and the other one in January, February.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Sounds like a very reasonable thing that has to be done, so let's go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
Can't afford to be losing power.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Smith. So, I understand the urgency around the $65,000. So, the remaining items on this list remain items on this list. There's no other action that you're asking for relative to these other items?
Well, I'm asking for you to request the funds from the Alderman.
For the $65,000?
For the entire amount. The $532 or the $461,000.
Okay. So, they're predisposed to give us $65,000?
Which is actually a transformer of a different apartment. That, that was--
I mean, I saw it from electrical to--
Right. That went from the traffic department to us. That actually was brokered through the mayor's office--
Okay.
--when we met with them a month ago. And then Alderman Dowd is--
So, that's sort of like an emergency, get that over there as soon as we can type thing?
Yes.
Thank you to the mayor's office for helping that.
Yes.
But, okay, so, but you are asking for another, oh, nearly, you know, a half a million, just under a half a million dollars for the remaining items on this list that are not currently in our budget?
Correct.
For next year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Smith?
I would just note that Alderman Dowd's already indicated a willingness to introduce the legislation. So, and he's been kind of looking for it for a few weeks now.
Okay. So, if there are no further questions or comments, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the request of $461,230 if the Alderman provide the $65,000, or $532,730 if the Alderman do not provide the $65,000.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
I'll second.
And seconded by Ms. Porter. Okay. On the motion, Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Guarino. A discussion, again, I have one question, if I may. Your memo, Mr. Smith, speaks to the bonding process. So, are we saying we don't care how they get the money? In other words, it may come out of an existing fund, or they may have to go out to the bonding market to get it?
Yes. The original conversation was they would bond it. But again, I think from our perspective, I'm speaking for you, we don't--
We don't really care how they get it.
We don't care, just give us the money.
All right, thank you.
Okay. On the motion, Ms. Porter was yes. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
And Mr. Guarino votes yes. So, the motion carries. I'm going to entertain another motion, motion to approve the retrofit of the switchgear at Middle Dunstable Elementary.
So moved.
Ms. Porter?
That's Main Dunstable.
I'm sorry.
Main Dun--
Main Dunstable. What'd it say, middle?
Yeah.
Yeah, I apologize. Main Dunstable. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. And second, I'll second it. On the motion, Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
And Mr. Guarino votes yes. So, the motion carries, three to zero. Okay, so I think we're-- Yes, Mr. Donovan?
Yes, I received something quick today. I'd just like to put it in. I think the board should probably know about it and see if you're okay with it. There is a parent, Burchhill School, who would like to purchase a Chromebook for every student at the school. So, they asked how to do it, and so we just talked with the principal a little bit. But I thought that we should sort of just at least bring it to the board to make sure that you're okay with this. Basically, we got a quote. It's, so it would give everyone their own Chromebook. I don't know all the details as far as would the children bring it home, or this or that. I don't know if that's been discussed yet. It's all relatively new here. But it's 425 Chromebooks, and where, there would be these exact same models that we would buy if we were to buy them ourselves. That total is $85,187. So, something I haven't come across since I've been here, and just thought I would put it out there if the board would like to think about it or discuss it.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Ms. Van Twyver?
I'd like to know who she is. I think this is remarkable. But I think what we need to find out is, would these belong to the students themselves, and they could keep them, or they go to the school?
No, they'd be this, they'd be at the school.
So, the school would own the Chromebooks even, and then when the children progress to the next grade, they don't take it with them?
Right. Yeah, when, when they move off to middle school, they would stay. So, it would always, it would be the Burchhill students that are current, well, their each year would, they would stay with the school.
Well, this is very generous. Very generous.
It is very generous.
Very nice, too.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any comments or questions?
I'm, I'm kind of stunned that somebody would do that. But I feel a lot of elation that somebody thought enough of our, of our students, our children, to be so gregarious to do that. That is remarkable, and yes, I agree that it's a wonderful thing. I'm for it, as long as they are willing.
Thank you.
I say yes.
Thank you. Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I'd like to know, first, that's wonderful, that they're thinking more about their children, and then anything else is just incredible, because I'm pro-child, and I think what he's doing, or they're doing, is great. It's beyond words. And I was wondering how fast can we push this through? If we can do that today, is it possible, or?
Well, if we, if we approve it in this committee, then we could--
Move it tonight.
If you adjust the rules and bring it up at tonight's board meeting, it could be approved, and then we could purchase those this summer, and they could be ready to go for school.
That's fantastic. Children first.
Mr. Kaufman?
I thank the parents who are kindly thinking about making that donation. And I don't want to dampen anybody's enthusiasm about it. But if you're going to have a Chromebook for every child in that school, you need to know if we have the infrastructure in that building to handle 400 Chromebooks. I know we've invested in this particular school, there's about $100,000 in our current budget for what they call endpoints. And they have been allocated, and we've been told wherever they're going, they are absolutely needed. So, I don't know if, it was Burchhill, right? I don't know if Burchhill is a recipient of any of those endpoints that we're purchasing this summer. I don't know if there's a need for additional equipment to support that generous gift. And then I don't know how many current, how many Chromebooks are currently at the school, which we may have maybe 20, or 50, or 100. So, perhaps the donation need not be, it could fill the gap, so everybody has one. So, I think there, as much as I would want to move this forward as expeditiously as possible--
Okay.
We might very well get a donation of equipment that we can't use because we don't have connectivity in the building. And that's a possibility. So, that means either we have to come up with the funds for those endpoints, or perhaps the person making the donation can redirect some of that money to fulfill the infrastructure piece, which at this moment is undefined.
Mr.--
May I comment?
Go ahead, Mr. Mosher, and then Ms. Timmons.
Yes, I can comment on Howard's thought there, which is very relevant. However, I don't believe all of these Chromebooks would be in use at the same time. So, possibly, if our system is not being overloaded now, I doubt it will be overloaded with the addition of a few more Chromebooks. Because they, like I said, they will not be all in operation at the same time.
Ms. Timmons?
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. I actually had the same sentiment. I've been over to Burchhill, and they do not use all the Chromebooks at the same time. So, therefore, you don't look a gift halfway in the mouth and say, you know, we may not be able to use it, because that's just silly to me. I think we should really recommend that we take the gift and appreciate it, and if we don't use them all at one time, that's quite all right. We still have them in our inventory, and they're smart.
Mr. Donovan, I have a question. This parent offered to buy 425 Chromebooks. Is that, is that what the offer was, or?
The offer was to-- The offer was to, yeah, it says here to purchase 425 Chromebooks for Birch Hill Elementary. We'd like to request a quote. And then the question of carts. And then there are some Chromebooks there already. I think there's between 90 and 100 or so Chromebooks. So might it change slightly? And if some of those are new, maybe they don't need 425? Then again, I'm not 100% sure how many children, 425 sounds about the Birch Hill size to me.
Right. Well, the other thing, the other thing is, we could take those Chromebooks and send them to another school. If they, if they're going to, if they say, well, we'll just buy 425 for all the students, we can shift them to another school, too. If, or unless their, their offer is just to fill the gap, whatever their offer is. You know, if they just want to say, 425, go ahead, you know?
Because there was a discussion, I'm just looking at this email again, because it originally started off with a smaller number of Chromebooks, still a significant number, but smaller than that. And so they spoke with IT and IT said, well, we'd like to have the same kind of Chromebooks. We need to have the license for each one. Then that, obviously, they would be property of the Nashua School District, things like that. So those were shared with the potential donor. And then I guess the potential donor came back and offered more.
Okay.
But like I said, all I have so far is one email from someone at IT that I got this morning. So I just figured, since we have in this meeting, I bring it forward, make sure that you're, you're okay. We, we, we got to work this thing and see exactly, there's a lot of details to be worked out.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure that we didn't just do something and not tell the board, since it is sort of out of the ordinary.
Ms. Porter, did you have a question?
I'm ready to make a motion, I think.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Go ahead.
No. Okay. Not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Hohensie?
I, I would appreciate it as a board member that we get everything understood before it comes back to finance and then back to the board. There, there may be additional, right, we don't know if we have Chromebooks that could be used, that are new enough where they would be comparable with the new ones that this family is prepared to donate to us. And you mentioned, and you now spoke to further involvement by IT, which I didn't know of based on your earlier comment. So are they, part of what they need to say to us is a recommendation of exactly, yes, we have the equipment we need to support them or we're going to need 12 carts and we're going to need, you know, whatever endpoints. And they need to identify where they would be and how they would be purchased.
Well, they did mention discussion about carts because where would you store them? So I think carts would be part of the equation. They didn't, in the email, they didn't mention anything about endpoints. So I don't know if they have enough or not. They have some.
See, the endpoint...
But that was not mentioned in IT's...
Okay. The endpoint involves some labor, if I recall correctly. They're doing things by wire. And then there's also wireless. That, it's a two-part solution. So it's not as, it could be more complicated than we think it is on the surface. But thanks again to the parents making that donation.
Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I imagine when you talk to IT, when they're talking about they'd all have the same software, that cost is already included in the quote you gave us?
Yes. It is.
Okay. And I'm sure the principal there will be very effusive in thanking them because this is a terrific gift.
Okay. Ms. Porter, you have the floor.
Okay. I move that we gratefully accept this generous donation of 425 Chromebooks for $85,187 at Birch Hill School.
What was that number again? 85?
$85,187.
Okay.
Right?
Yes. Okay. I second. Mr. Mosher, on the motion to, to accept the donation, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Yes, yes is habit, three to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Donovan. And with that, I believe we are at the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. On the motion to adjourn, I second it. Mr., Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. The meeting is adjourned at 6:40.
I would like to call the Human Resources Committee to order. It is now 6:43 on June 25th. And we are at Nashua High Knoll. Roll call, Ms. Van Treiber?
Here.
Mr. Mosher? Mr. Mosher?
Yeah. I'm here.
Okay. Ms. Porter?
Here.
Ms. O'Gara?
Here.
In attendance, we also have Ms. Hohensie, Mr. Kaufman, Mr. Guarino, Ms. Oden, and that's it, I guess. Okay. On the agenda, we have personnel recommendations dated June 25th, 2008. Are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I, I'm curious. Number nine is listed. But several weeks ago, we received an email from, from the administrative secretary, which was forwarding to us, an email from this particular person that had, was another two weeks or several weeks earlier. So I know that this person had submitted a letter of resignation in the first couple of weeks of May. And I'm just curious why we're seeing it here at the end of the month?
We inadvertently left it off the last board meeting.
Okay. Thank you. And number 10, I have a question. Didn't we approve number 10 previously?
I don't believe so.
No. I actually checked all these names and we did not approve this number 10.
The head psychologist, not this one. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Any questions? Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions?
No.
So I, I move to approve the personnel recommendation dated June 25th, 2018.
I'll second it.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Ms. Porter, are you a member of this committee?
Yes, she is.
The alternate vote.
She's, she's a member of the committee.
No, but he can't. He's not. So I'll second.
Not a voting member.
All right.
So you need the...
I'd only get one of the other members is, is missing.
Right. And we're all, we're all here.
We are here. Ms. Van Treiber, you're here.
So you made, you made the motion and my second?
I made the motion. You second it. Okay.
Okay.
All right. So can we have a roll call?
You don't need a roll call.
Ms. Van Treiber?
Yes.
I'm suspending that particular rule. I'm doing a roll call right now. I have a right to do that. So are you here?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Mosher?
I'm here.
Ms., Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'd like to approve, I just did that, like to approve that recommendation. So we...
Going to vote?
Yeah.
We came ready to vote. Would you please let me do that?
Okay.
The motion to accept the personnel recommendation on the floor. And we had, and the motion was moved by?
By you.
By you.
By me, seconded by you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. There's any opposed? So the motion carries. So a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to adjourn, seconded by Ms. Porter, Ms. Van Treiber?
Yes.
Ms. Mosher?
No, he's not voting.
And Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned at 6:47.